No, wait a minute. Good evening, everyone. We have a short crew tonight. We have a couple of people that have been excused on the board, but I will open up the Southampton Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, March 4, 2020. And our first agenda item tonight is Mark Reed is here for Robert and Eileen Kuchar, and he has an A&R for 11 Friar Road.
Evening.
This is not creating a new lot, correct?
Correct. So, Robert and Eileen Kuchar live on Friar Road in a house located here. They have a large parcel of land, and two years ago, they sold a 100 by 100-foot parcel of land to Tom Jackie Sears. So this plan shows that they're going to sell a 100 by 100-foot corner of their lot to...
Simone.
Simone.
Pritzowski.
Yep. So it still meets the area requirement, still leaves them with 2.153 acres of land with their existing house, doesn't change the frontage or any of that.
Where is the frontage?
Here, here.
Not Friar.
Yeah, they drive west of that, so it's Friar. But these are small lots, non-conforming lots, so it's making this less non-conforming by adding another 99.
So these were non-conforming because they're for grandfathered?
Yes, yeah, from a long time.
And even in the future, if this butter here decides to buy a parcel, it's still going to leave them with enough acreage?
Oh, it will. Yeah, because this is 30,000 square foot. So...
So the frontage reason they're doing it is just to make it conforming or...
No, just to add another, add more land to it.
And sell some.
Yep, yep, and make a little money in their retirement. Yep.
All right. Any other questions from the board on this? Seems pretty straightforward.
So in terms of the lot size and it being an A&R and just being in addition to another lot, I mean, there's no specific square foot requirement?
No. Right. So somebody could sell them, you know, a 50 by 100-foot lot or 25-foot by 100.
Because this is grandfathered, any addition, how big or how small.
Small it is.
So there's no zoning by law?
Or they could...
And then to read the note over here, it says that that will be comprised of this parcel.
So is it important to have these abutters aware or doesn't?
No, it's... No. It don't change to their property at all?
It doesn't matter if it's wetland?
Doesn't...
If it...
Oh, no, it's...
If it meets the zoning, that's why they call it an A&R, ruble is not required. So we're just saying that we agree.
This is over off of County Road in Kuchar. Pond, the pond is way over here. This is all sand and gravel.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Jim, second by Cindy. All in favor?
Aye.
Start signing.
So it's March 4?
March 4.
This is for the Mylar.
And you don't need to do a house number or any of that stuff because Simone already has a Kuchar Road address. Switch pens. Four, so I'll take these two and make it all in group. Four of them, right? Thank you.
You've got something to go, you want to stick around here.
Uh, I can stick around. Have that suffer.
This agenda item next was not originally on the agenda, but I've added it. It was a request by, I know Jim Malo, but I'm not sure of the other party that's here.
Ronnie Magdlin?
Ronnie Magdlin. They have questions about a piece of property on Line Street that they'd like to put before the board for their input, and I've asked Mark Reed to stick around just for a minute since heritage to the survey. So whoever's going to present, please come up to the podium and identify yourself.
Yeah, as we just spoke to Mark here, we think we've got our answers, but should I lay this out in front of you?
Identify yourself.
Oh, James Malo, sorry. Okay. So Mark has said he's a student here, and Ron probably has some more questions than me. I'm a little bit rookie on this stuff, but this piece of land here, which is a good friend of his, he was approached on.
When I talked to him the other day, he was willing to take this piece out.
Okay, just for everybody's purpose, here's the access to this lot back here.
Existing home here.
This is Line Street.
What's the address? 80...
76, I believe.
76?
Yeah.
So the house, yeah.
Just for, just for, where's like Eastwood or Pine?
This is heading to Westfield.
This is in front of Eastwood.
It wraps around, Eastwood wraps around.
Is it between the two entrances?
Yes.
Okay. Got it, now I know where it is.
So we're curious as to what our options would be to be able to put a couple of lots in here, or can we, I know something talked about flag lots, is that something that's happening in this town?
We don't, we don't have anything on the books for flag lots yet.
They're revisiting the zoning, and where it goes from here, we don't know yet. We have total public hearings and everything, so anything, I guess everything's on the table, we don't know what's...
Yeah, but there's nothing currently on the books, so we might be a couple of years away from flag lots. You've got common driveways, you've got cluster developments.
Yep. That's great.
So I guess what would be our options to be able to make this into maybe, we're hoping maybe three lots, but I don't know how that'll work as far as your opinion on it.
We have to be very careful advising people, because if it doesn't go your way, then you can blame the board for it.
Well, no, it's not.
If you come to us with an idea of what you'd like to do, we can say yes or no.
Right.
But to advise the different options, it's hard, I think.
Yeah, we're not hard-nosed, you know, it's just an opportunity if possible and...
All right, the, just because you probably haven't, I don't know if you viewed it at all on the zoning bylaws, what the common driveway specs were. Former vax such which is a street but extends from a street serving to provide common vehicular access to more than one, but not more than four residential lots, built in accordance with the special permit. The driveway shall lie entirely within the lots being served. Common driveways may be allowed by means of special permitting and plan approval of the planning board for residential uses. All lots associated with the use of common driveway must provide off-street parking in accordance with Town of Southampton criteria. Town of Southampton shall not be required to provide construction, reconstruction, maintenance, snow plowing, school bus pickup, or police patrols along a common driveway. Common driveway standards must be met in order for approval. The width of the right-of-way shall be a minimum of 35 feet. The width of the common driveway surface shall be 18 feet, except where the drive services only two lots. Common drive shall have three feet of gravel shoulders on each side. Common driveway shall not exceed 800 feet in length to the last lot line. So that's pretty much the basic criteria. The rest is common procedure for subdivisions and clusters, but that's the basics if, to get to a common driveway. And if it's less than 800 feet, then you'd have to request a waiver, probably similar...
More than 800.
More than 800 feet would be a waiver, as well as a cluster would probably be the same if it exceeds.
Yeah, but...
That doesn't seem big enough.
You can't even go in a direction of a common driveway, because if you're going to serve multiple house lots, you have to have, those house lots have to have frontage on a public road, which you don't have here.
Right.
Let's say, let's say for instance that, you know, there was something here, maybe a big hole in the ground here, maybe a pond over there, but this lot had frontage on Line Street, you know, you had three lots. You could access it through a common driveway, is what Paul was just reading to you.
Right.
But without having frontage, the minimum, what is this residential neighborhood? What is it?
Yeah, so it's RR, so you would need 175 feet of frontage.
You need 175 feet of frontage on a public way for each lot, even though you could service them through a common driveway, you would still need that.
Yeah, so you can't even do a house.
Yes. You can't even put one house in there, from what I'm seeing.
There are no houses there now?
Yes, there is houses there. Most of those have houses on.
These lots have houses on, but this slot in the back doesn't even have 175 feet of frontage, so you technically cannot even build one house out there. The only thing you want, if you wanted to go through the subdivision regulation, which we have, then you got to put in, you got to, you know, design it and build a public road to come back here, and then if you go all the way here, then you'd have to have 175 feet of frontage on that new road in order to have building lots, which is a very, very expensive way to go.
Has that changed over the years at all? Because I did, we did some houses over up on Palmeri Meadow Road right across from BoCo, and it's the same scenario as this. There's a common here, common driveway, there's a house here, a house here, and a house here.
Yeah, but there's a lot of frontage there.
But that had Palmeri Meadow frontage, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of...
There is a house actually right here on Palmeri Meadow, so I don't understand where they're getting their frontage from.
A good example to use is if you look up Gilbert Road.
Yep.
You got Gilbert Road, and then there's a private driveway off Gilbert Road. It services maybe 10 houses.
Is that Glitter?
Glitter, or Glitter put that in. And there's a, it's a private way that services like, I'm going to say roughly 10 houses. And if you look at the plan, some of the frontages, some of the width of the lots go way through the woods and come out over here.
Right, right.
And they have their frontage, even though they cannot access it through some of those are pretty deep ravines and things.
It just bleeds up to the main road.
Two up on Virchwood, too.
Yes.
He's got his frontage junkyard.
Yeah. Correct. So as long as you, that's...
So I guess, looking at it, I agree that, you know, a cul-de-sac under subdivision control law would be the only option. The question is, because they may only get two or three lots out of it, is the ability of creating a private way out of a subdivision road so that the town doesn't have to maintain it for one, and so that looks more like a driveway meeting all those other performance standards for a common driveway, but still having the required frontage on a cul-de-sac right of way as an option to...
And it's still a private...
Yes, a private driveway.
Which wouldn't require fireheadings and any of that type of stuff, right?
Common driveway as a possibility to, you know, there's five acres of land that, you know, until such time, like you say, until flag lots might come into play, which could be...
We never know, Kevin.
Yeah, could be.
The question, is there any need like that in town yet? I'm not familiar with any.
No, no, I don't believe so. A flag lot is like a, like a flag pole, where it would come in with narrower frontage off of street and then open up into a large piece.
I see.
All right. So for instance, if the town and most communities have flag lot bylaws to allow for backland to be developed, where, like in Northampton, you know, they allow for a building envelope in larger pieces here and here, and then have like a flag pole. They call it, would be the flag pole, which would go out to a public way.
So if that was the case here, it would only be two lots?
Correct.
And that just omits the, the frontage requirement? I mean, the...
Correct, because that's under a special permit by law.
That's a whole different...
It's a whole different...
Different criteria.
Criteria. I've never seen it.
But it's not in effect, period, you know?
I can't say whether, I don't know nothing about that.
So I guess, I guess as it stands right now, from what I'm hearing, it's basically not even a one-house lot, as far as the way the standards are right now, correct?
As far as the frontage is concerned.
So there isn't enough frontage here?
And there's no flag lots.
For one lot?
I would say you do not, they call it an A&R, not a lot. Approval not required, that means you meet the zoning regulations for a building lot. It doesn't meet that at its time.
Right, okay.
If you go to the subdivision regulation and you keep it a private way, that...
Yeah, that's, you know...
I have no idea. I haven't been down that road. I haven't been on the board. In the last 10 years, that hasn't come through the board, so I don't have any experience with that.
This is the first time I've seen something like that.
But, you know, like I said, as far as an A&R lot, you don't meet the requirements for that.
Okay, so as it stands right now, it's not even a one, one lot as far as...
With the A&R process.
Yeah, exactly.
But could you put that in? Would you do something with a price by?
It's not going to do you any good.
But it's on the line, right?
You get to the board and...
Yeah, but I mean, it doesn't lie to this right now.
Understood, but I mean, just to get to the area, to navigate through the web page, to find myself...
Maybe if you design standards...
Actually, I was poking in that the other night, but thinking that was the route we were taking.
The town does have cluster bylaw, but I'm not sure whether it's enough land and area to even do a cluster development.
How about tiny houses? You guys doing those?
Still have to meet that. They can move around.
Cluster regs are in the subdivision regulations.
Also, but they're, they're not, they're not the most user-friendly.
I don't, I think you'd have a hard time with a cluster, particularly...
This is the subdivision one, 2015. You've probably seen all of it.
It's online, yeah.
Yeah, I was on it there just briefly, and then, well, just go ask questions.
I guess, I would suggest if you're beginning of doing something with the subdivision regulations, you're going to have to hire an engineer, come up with a plan. You do a preliminary, come before us and say, this is what we'd like to do, and then the board can look at it and give you thumbs up or thumbs down, proceed or not proceed, or if they were...
How much that cost?
So, to work through that, I, yeah, top of my head, no, I don't know. I always get in trouble doing that.
Yeah.
50, 100 bucks?
Well, thank you for your time and...
Interesting, little skin off our teeth to check it out, anyway. Was that the proper?
It's either that or you got to wait a few more years, because as I say, the regs are being reviewed and revised.
It might not go anywhere for a few years if no one else can do anything with it.
We're hoping to bring something to town meeting by 2021, a year from May, hopefully. So, and if it passes, then there might be an open window for you then.
Right, right, okay. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jim, see you.
See you around.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Next, we got some reports or some, some information that Cindy can give us on Master Plan Implementation Committee and stormwater coating. Go ahead.
So the Master Plan Implementation Committee, I know Paul understands this primarily, Jim, that we were fortunate that we applied for, actually, the planning board applied for a DLT-A grant that is going to be administered through Piney Valley Planning Commission to support the ongoing implementation of the master plan. It's already been reduced to a different set of goals and priorities that was presented to the select board in November. It's online under the Master Plan Implementation Committee, you know, minutes, extra documents if you want to go through my town government, down our org to see it. It includes something for every single chapter, including economic development, housing, whatever, open space.
In fact, it's in that packet that you've got in front of you.
Oh, great.
It's in this right here?
No, it's not that.
No.
I don't know if he's got that. Do you have it? Did you give it to him?
I don't have...
That's not, that's not it. That's not it.
That's not...
That's not it. That's the stormwater one.
I just have...
So then, a couple of things happened. We had a joint meeting with the planning board, we being the Master Plan Implementation Committee, in January. Paul and Paul were able to attend, and me, from the planning board, and then the grant was approved, and then we had another joint meeting with select board, master plan.
Last week.
And planning board, and that just occurred last week. Paul was able to come to that one and me, and then this gentleman, Ken Comia, who is consulting to the planning board from PVPC as well, he is the one who's going to be working on that. And I guess the final thing to tell you is that the next step we're going to take is coordinating to engage the public, to find out if, we're not going to rewrite the master plan now, that's already established, but to engage the public in terms of the actual goals they want to see achieved, and where their priorities are, and input. If somebody comes up with a brand-new idea or a brand-new thing that should be in, it's not going to be ignored, but it's perhaps going to be looked at in terms of, is it something that needs to be done now, or should we put it forward for a future plan? The main things primarily are Greenway, the infrastructure issues, certainly understanding housing, affordable housing is a really good one, economic development, want to understand the best thing to do for our town on that. So that's just a quick report on that. So we're going to be working with Ken Comia, we're appreciative of Paul Demond saying to be aware that the amount of money that is allotted through a DLT-A can be used up very, very quickly. So we're being very, really careful about how we, you know, Ken understands this.
The reason I said that is remember what Larry told us before, that these DLTAs, he doesn't think they appropriate enough money to them, so they start out, and they get so far, and all of a sudden they stop because the funds have run out. And I think we tried to impress upon Ken the other night...
And we did.
That you want to maximize his efforts to accomplish something and not just start it, and then all of a sudden it ends, and you haven't come to a conclusion on anything yet.
So what, we've talked to him, we're having another meeting of the Master Plan Implementation Committee without him this coming Monday, and we're going to do as much groundwork as we can, and then ask him to put his expertise on it to him.
Well, I think the, the interesting part to me was now, the, when the master plan was implemented, remember they had the meetings over at Norris School where several people came and, you know, and whatever. Now, that's what, some seven years later, six years later, whatever, and the MPIC committee and some of the people on the select board thought, oh geez, maybe some things and priorities have changed in that six, seven years, whatever it was. So that's why they want to go back out and get up the pulse of the community, and I think you said that the best venue for it would be at the town meeting in May. I think in social media, they're going to get involved in it, I think, too?
I don't know if we use the word best. We use the word another opportunity.
Option.
It might include something at the spring into Southampton event that occurs in early May. Additionally, it might include something on Celebrate Southampton, which is going to be, it's first weekend in August this year. So we don't want to ignore the fact that things may have shifted a little bit in Southampton over the last seven years, but we're not rewriting the whole master plan. Do you have any thoughts or comments, Jim?
No, I think that's...
If it comes to you, and you do, please raise them, come with me, to me if you want, you can come to any member of the committee, because it's important that we, that we understand this.
I'm guessing it was a lot longer than that.
What's that?
I'm going to go back when the first master plan was written. They actually, I was invited to one of their meetings, just what are your thoughts? And they invited certain people in the town just to come in, just to get ideas. I met the librarian.
Okay.
That was, what, how long ago was that?
It was probably 2012. It was ratified, it was ratified in 13.
Yeah, John Furman was the chairman at the time, I believe.
Keith Locke was actually on that committee, on the original master plan committee.
After, no, but after it was, after the charrette...
The implementation?
Yeah, yeah, after the so-called charrette came about and it was developed.
What's the charrette?
The charrette was the meeting that was held, public meeting that was held at Norris School, where they called people into town, we broke up into groups.
Yeah, I was there. I didn't know it was called the charrette.
Yeah, there's another room, that's another word for it.
Oh, okay.
They did them in Northampton the same way, so...
Okay. So that's really, I'll keep telling you what's going on, I'd love to see it go somewhere in this calendar year.
I hope you can get, you're paying for your buck, you know, and...
What's a dollar value? What did you...
Seventy-five, I hope, max, at, what is it, like $70 an hour?
And the reason, and the reason I said that is we got the bill that I'm putting up for a warrant tonight for the zoning amendment for...
Yeah, that was at last week.
73, the other zoning amendment, and it was initial meeting that Ken came to, to introduce himself, and that was $2,500. And I said, wow, I, you know, just on two zoning amendment changes, and I questioned him. I haven't heard back from him yet, but I thought it was kind of excessive. Larry thought it was excessive, but again, Larry said that without his knowledge, maybe on some of the things that Larry can say off the top of his head, maybe he had to dig in more, but it seemed to me like, you know, like each, each one of them was like, one was nine hours and another one was six or seven. I said, that's a, that's a lot of, that's a lot of research.
We actually, he told us he was going to write a summary of what we've done to date, and I said, look, we've got very good minutes, we've got an Excel sheet of what we've done. Mike Rosenberg kept this excellent Excel sheet of what we've done today. I said, we don't need a report of what we've done to date, we need going forward. And then what we really need when it's, when he's, before he leaves us at the end of 2020 is a really clear roadmap of how to get from here to there, for example, for the Greenway or maybe Council or something, if those are...
Yeah, that's why the priority is going to come in, is most important, so he can just focus on one thing. If he's going to start nitpicking at two or three different things, it's not going to come to any completion.
The reason for the public visioning, just so you understand, is when the, when the select board was originally presented the goals in November of 2019, some of the select board members made it clear that they want to make sure to invite public comments. They didn't want it to not invite public comments. That's why we were including that, because I heard you whisper to me, you know, hey, we already did the public visioning.
Well, we did, and that's where, that's where the master plan came from.
I know, but it's, it's 2020 now, you know, so there's new people, young people, and things may have shifted a little bit. So that's pretty much it. I'll keep you informed on that. The other one is the stormwater coating. I'm groaning because it's so far away from anything I understand. I've been to the second meeting now. That's two PVPC people. It's Patty Gamborini and Ken Comia. And so we've been going through various things. They wanted, somebody like Paul Fergel, who looks at these things all the time in his job, to look... to look at this driveway regulations thing. So I brought him a copy of this tonight. He's not here. I mentioned it to Randall, who was at the previous meeting. He's just gonna call up Paul and see if he has any thoughts on this, because to me, this would go within the planning board meeting, that we could bring this up, we still can. I didn't make photocopies of every single thing for you guys, because it's just in process. So we've gone through a potential new bylaw for, and this would go in general bylaws, they tell me, for erosion and sediment for stormwater management. And this has all been written all over with various upgrades they're recommending. Another one on water supply protection districts, that they wanted to go to the zoning bylaws. And the codes have to be looked at, the various codes regarding drainage and erosion and sediment and curb cuts. So all of that is happening. Patty Gamborini apparently has, you know, a great deal of knowledge about it. We've got Art Lawrence on there, who knows a lot about conservation. Ed attends these meetings, and Randall. So, I'm just there from the planning board, and I'm not sure I'm the right one, but I'm there to attend them. But I can keep you informed of when these meetings are happening, in case you want to come into any of them.
A lot of them happen during the daytime.
They all happen during, this one was eight o'clock in the morning.
That's why it's difficult for many of us here, except those that are retired, to try to make that. I'm sure Paul would chime in on it after reviewing it. He'd certainly give his opinion.
Yeah. They are hoping to have at least one at like 5:30 in the evening, just to accommodate more of you, when they kind of get it a little tighter. So can I go back and say that, if you noticed, if it would be possible, you know, you can try to.
Makes it a lot easier.
Yeah, it would, yeah. If you want to see any of this paperwork, I can give you copies of it, or we can just wait a little closer to the date to.
I would wait.
Have we established debate pack yet? I know that expired.
Pardon me?
Barnes Aquifer Protection.
So the status of that is, the mayor of East Hampton, what's her name?
Nicole.
Nicole LaChapelle. She had indicated an interest of using a joint D L T A grant to revive that. And they kind of jumped all over it, meaning P V P C was pretty excited about it. And then she didn't. She kind of stepped back, maybe she had other priorities. So as of right now, it has not been reactivated, and there hasn't been an effort to do so. And Ed is aware of what isn't happening, so.
I know Patty was very strong in that.
Yeah.
Reactive, I should say.
Yeah, that's kind of her expertise, isn't it, water?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a warrant here for, again, bringing it up, P V P C. And it was period July through December of 2019. Twenty-nine and a half total staff hours at $85. And a $49.95 charge for equipment, supplies, travel, and mileage, 2378. So the total was 258123. Motion to.
I'm gonna ask you a question before that. You just said you asked him to be a little clearer on that, and he hasn't gotten back to you.
No, but I don't think it's fair to uphold the payment. If they do change it or revise it or credit vac, it'll come because we have a signed contract for this fiscal year for work. So I just wanted to let them know, just explain a little bit better, that's all.
All right, so if you're comfortable with it, I move to agree to pay the warrant for 25.
258123.
Second.
Second by.
It was a motion, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Boy, I'm running out of ink on all these pens I got today. This finally came back. And then lastly, and it's in your packet, I just, I'm trying to keep abreast of minutes with Kathy no longer available to us. I didn't want to get them lapsed. We, we were really behind the eight ball there sometime back, and I finally got them all caught up, and I'm trying to keep them updated. So, review if you would the minutes for February 5th, and see if you have any additions. I, I, yeah, I, go ahead.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Is Leveken Associates withdrawing? Did that happen at that meeting?
Yeah, they withdrew the one for.
I knew they withdrew it, but did they withdraw it at the meeting?
No, they withdrew it, the meeting that.
Right before the town meeting, that day?
Before the time meeting, I was advised by the select board that they withdrew it. And then I brought it up at.
You brought it up at this meeting?
At this meeting, to say that they withdrew it and they're re-presenting it in May.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so, I remember that that happened then, but I agree to the minutes as written.
Motion by Cindy.
Second.
Second by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the other one is on the 19th, and I, after I drew them up, I found this note about the, the old, remember the old tire dump discussion, Jim?
Yeah.
I failed to put that in there, so I know I've gotta add that, but I think everything else is okay, but.
What about it? I wasn't there.
No, I'll explain in a second.
Yeah, other than that little bit you left out.
Yeah, just give a brief synopsis of that dump property, Jim, for Cindy.
Is that what is now the Fletcher farm?
It's going to be, I guess.
Yeah, I'm going off memory, and it's not that great. But we had a discussion about, this is the parcel that used to be part of the Fowles Farm prior to Fletcher. It was cut out where the tire dump was. We were asked if we had any concerns, if they were to move forward, and whether they auction it or sell it or get, whatever they do with the property, do we have any concerns? And the only concern I believe we raised.
Easements.
Was the drainage easements, just keep an eye on the drainage easements that the town retained to make sure that whoever acquires that property, it doesn't interfere with the water that goes that direction from the.
Isn't that why, isn't the Fletchers want to buy it? Isn't that the whole point?
I, I've heard that, yes. I'm pretty sure.
I mean, they've gone before, select board.
Yes, that is correct.
So it's not, it's not hearsay, it's fact, I think.
Right, but we're not sure how they're gonna do it yet. We're not sure how the process is gonna go for them to convey the property to somebody else. All they were asking the planning board is if there was any concerns that we could see. And the only concern that I recall is the drainage easements, just to make, I know there is some, and they're deeded. I just want to make sure that those are upheld, and, just for town's sake.
Because isn't it a landlocked piece of property, too?
It's pretty much landlocked, and I believe it's an A P R. So, there's a lot of restrictions in that parcel.
Yeah.
But when I heard them speak before the select board, Bob spoke, and the erosion has gotten worse, continued. It's never been resolved, if I understood it correctly.
I've heard Bob in the past, he's mentioned that if he was to own the property, he would be entitled to more grants or types of money that could help stabilize it. But being the town, it's not as accessible to those monies. So that was his explanation to the board, why if he had it, he could try to stabilize it better. Those are some of the things that he brought up.
Okay, thank you for the update, yeah.
That's all I have, very, very brief tonight.
Were those approved with the amendment?
Oh, gosh, yeah, so, thank you. The 19th minutes, then, we will, I'll look for a motion to approve, just to include the topic of the dump property.
Well, we'll call it dump property, but, yeah, I approve them, I vote to approve the minutes with the paragraph that describes the.
Tire dump.
I guess you'd call it tire dump, on the former Fowles Farm, the concerns that we came up with.
Got a second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay. So we'll be able to be here the next one, we got that.
Right. Actually, is it the one after that, or is it in May?
Uh, May, unless the coronavirus.
Yeah.
Stops the plans, if we've gone on for a year and a half.